Your patient says we get the audio together. The Jackson Public School Board is meeting is now called to order. Board, we have six members present and therefore we have a quorum. We have all had the opportunity to review the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So moved. Second.
Dr. Luckett has moved. Dr. Hairston has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Maze, there being none, the motion is approved. Reading and approval of the minutes. Board, we have had the opportunity to review the minutes in advance. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from December 1st, 2020 as presented?
I still move.
Second.
Ms. Hilliard has moved. Mr. Figures has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Maze, there being none, the motion is approved. Now we are on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Seback. Greetings, board members, Jackson Public Schools administrators and staff, to our parents, our scholars, community partners, all of you. Just thank you for joining us via teleconference this evening. We'll begin as we typically do with a video presentation with the latest district news and important updates from our instructional television production team.
Members of the Student Board of Representatives serve as liaisons between all students and the superintendent by representing student interests on policy and procedures. They serve as a voice to the board regarding student issues and provide communication between school-based leadership, the school board, and the community. The representatives are Samunik Blackman, a graduating senior at Callaway High School. She plans to become a neurosurgeon to find cures for various brain disorders. EJ Cia Adams, a junior at Forest Hill High School. She is an honor society member and named superior cadet for 2020. Essence Byrd, a graduating senior at Jim Hill High School. She plans to attend Texas Southern University to earn a degree in political science, a minor in public relations, and to become a U.S. Congresswoman. A Miracle Johnson, student body president at Lanier High School. She plans to attend a military institute and to become a registered nurse. Chanty Bradock attends Per Vine High School. She plans to enlist in the Air Force or pursue a career in medicine. Faragensky, a student at the Murrah High School Academic and Performing Arts Complex, developed a six-week intensive Spanish course for elementary and middle school students. Ethan Thomas, a full-time college freshman at Tugalu College and a junior at the JPS Tugalu Early College High School program, also spent the summer studying at Brown University. And Eduardo Hernandez, a senior at Wingfield High School. He plans to attend Mississippi State University and major in business administration and management. Are you looking for the perfect Christmas event to put you in that festive holiday mood?
Oh dear, it seems I need someone to be my Clara.
Then look no further than our JPS Facebook page. Hannah Bonds of Bailey APAC is performing as Clara in a video production of the Nutcracker Ballet. Clara is the central character in the presentation. The ballet is narrated by Murrah graduate Emil Wilson. The production is produced by Kinetic Etchings, a contemporary dance and theater company based in Jackson. The Dashin' Divas donated 10 computers each to Green, Lester, Key, and Marshall Elementary Schools. The devices will be used by scholars for virtual learning. Dashin' Divas President Betty Lockwood and JPS Assistant Superintendent Dion Woody delivered the laptops to the schools. Thank you from JPS for your generous donation. The JPS Board of Trustees approved the district's Smart Restart Plan at its December 1st regular board meeting. Smart Restart is a blueprint designed to safely welcome scholars back to school in January 2021. Mr. Joseph Albright, Chief Operations Officer for Jackson Public Schools, gives an update on some of the district's PPE supplies and how the resources will be utilized to keep scholars and staff healthy and safe.
All of the equipment, all of the disinfectants, the personal protective equipment, everything that's needed to keep our staff and especially our scholars safe is in the warehouse at this point. One of the new pieces of equipment that we are especially proud that we were able to bring into Jackson Public Schools is the electrostatic foger. This particular piece of equipment provides fine particulate aerosolized that coats the surfaces of desks, chairs, floors. We use it on our buses to disinfect. It certainly speeds up the process, but at the same time, we can use disinfectants that are much more effective.
JPS administrators are interested in a new app for the new school year. The device is called the Safer Management App.
Today we talked to JPS, one of the districts that we're working with, about an application and that they can use in order to track real-time symptoms.
The technology synchronizes with a desktop and dashboard to track student and staff attendance, as well as supports temperature checks and contact tracing for diseases like COVID-19.
I think that's why a lot of the different districts and universities signed on because our whole mission is beyond after COVID. Anybody on an educational level knows how important attendance is and being able to do so, being able to use our artificial intelligence and machine learning programs that we have in order to detect different types of sicknesses from pink eyes, from the cold, from the flu. None of that's going away. Being able to do all this inside of our application, leveraging our platform, providing meaningful information, real-time information, and also making sure that everyone is safe.
JPS is proposing to use the app to support reentry of traditional and hybrid learning scholars as part of the Smart Restart Plan. The Safer Management App was invented by Frederick Burns, a 2009 graduate of Wingfield High School and valedictorian. He is also a graduate of Jackson State University. The Jackson Public School District is accepting applications for middle school special programs, academic and performing arts, or international baccalaureate through January 31st, 2021. Apply online before 11:59 PM on the deadline. JPS kicked off 12 days of JPS MUS with lots of fun events. One of the activities included an elf on the shelf. And from the look of things, the little guy couldn't stay put. The district's official mobile app is now available. Get access to news, the district directory, and much more. Download it on Google Play and the Apple App Store. For more information about Jackson Public Schools, please visit our website, visit us on Facebook, Twitter, YouTube, and Comcast Channels 18 and 19.
As always, we'd like to thank our talented instructional television team for their production of the video. As mentioned, board members, in our news and highlights video, I'm very pleased to welcome the talented scholars who will represent their respective high schools as members of the JPS Board of Trustees. This is yet another example of the powerful engagement experiences to which we've committed with our scholars. Other examples include our student government associations, SGAs, at each of the high schools, the scholar satisfaction surveys, and the Superintendent Scholar Advisory Committee. As we continue advocating for excellence in education, we must provide opportunities to listen to and learn from our scholars and their experiences in Jackson Public Schools. So, board members, we've committed to monitoring and you've committed to monitoring and mentoring and guiding these young leaders to ensure that their experiences on the board are rich and to support them in bringing their important voices to the table as decisions are made. And so again, we welcome all of our new scholar trustees and we wish them every success as board members and as we know they'll continue on with really bright futures. Really proud to receive them. Board members, for your information, we held a virtual staff meeting last evening to discuss the Smart Restart Plan and to field more of the questions raised by our staff members. And I want to thank each of our JPS team members who participated in the meeting, as well as those who weren't able to join us because we had maxed out in terms of space. Our staff members continued engagement is vital, really, as we continue the implementation planning to launch the Smart Restart Plan and furthermore, just throughout the district, for all of the work that we're lifting. And so for those staff members who were not able to join and attend the meeting last night, they can go to our website, to the Intranet, and watch the recording of the meeting then, or there. As well, our frequently asked questions, our FAQ document is posted on the website for the entire community. And it is filled with useful information and is periodically updated. So we just encourage everyone to review that document periodically. Board members, the strategic plan, as you know, Excellence for All captures our vision, our mission, our core values, as well as the performance goals and plans to improve educational outcomes for our scholars. Even though 2020 has been incredibly challenging of a year, we must continue the work of transforming our district. And I know that you're committed and expecting us to continue in those efforts. At this time, I want to welcome our Chief of Staff, Dr. Michael Cormack, who will join us to provide an update on the progress related to the strategic plan. Dr. Cormack?
All right. Good evening to Board Vice President, Dr. Seback, to Dr. Green, and to members of the board. I come before you with our semi-annual update on our implementation of the strategic plan, Excellence for All. As you are all well aware, on July 18th, 2019, we launched our five-year strategic plan, Excellence for All. And that strategic plan included a call to action from our superintendent, as well as several key components. We launched our six core values, as well as five-year goals and metrics, five key commitments, and our profile of a JPS graduate, which signals to our community and to our scholars our grand aspirations for every JPS scholar. So as part of our implementation effort, Dr. Green designated five commitment champions to assist with the work of the implementation of the strategic plan. And so let me just quickly review our five strategic commitments and our quarterbacks, if you will, of those efforts. For commitment one, a strong start, that is led by Dr. William Merritt IV, who is our Assistant Superintendent for School Support. Leading the charge for innovative teaching and learning, our commitment two is Dr. Kim Smith, who serves as Executive Director of Teaching and Learning. I lead as our Chief of Staff. Commitment three, our commitment to talented and empowered teams. And I'm supported in that work by our awesome human resources team, which is led by Ms. Sandra Lyons. Commitment four focuses on joyful learning environments, and that is led by Ms. Amanda Thomas. She's our Executive Director of Climate and Wellness. And commitment five is a focus on creating a culture of accountability and excellence, and it's led by Dr. Nicole Charleston, Executive Director of Data and Accountability. While each of us as central office leaders is charged with leading these efforts, this is shared work across the district, and it resides in every school and building throughout the district to live into these commitments. And so each of these leaders is designated to continue the progress and the forward movement designated for each of these commitments. This evening, I want to share with you some of the progress that has been made to date regarding our strategic plan, Excellence for All, and also to describe a key signature initiative related to each of the five strategic commitments. Before this presentation, the board has recently heard from our Assistant Superintendents and the academic leadership team around the data on our benchmarks. Of course, given COVID, there was a suspension of state testing, which we would, under normal circumstances, use as a benchmark to take a look at our progress towards goals. Instead, we've been utilizing our benchmark exams as an interim assessment, as a way to look at that progress. But you've had a recent report on that data. So this evening, I'll focus instead on some five signature initiatives that we launched with the design of the plan and share with you some of the progress that has been made in that regard. So for those of you who are familiar with the strategic plan, you'll be familiar with this implementation grid. What I've done here is to consolidate our five commitments and to address five key initiatives that I want to share with you tonight. Some exciting progress has been made. With regard to commitment one, a strong start, one of the key initiatives was for us to develop a parent academy. And you can see the five-year implementation plan is laid out here with those initiatives laid out in yellow as planning efforts, the orange representing implementation years, and then the R in purple representing refinement. So for the development of a parent academy, we were in the planning phase last year, and we have implemented that this year. We're excited about the partnership launch with the Barxville Reading Institute that has been deepened even due to COVID, and I'll address that in greater detail moving forward. With regard to innovative teaching and learning, one of our key initiatives was engaging out-of-school time experiences. We were again in planning phases and looking to implement that this year with refinement occurring in school year '22, '23, and beyond. For talented and empowered teams, which is near and dear to my heart, we were focusing on developing teacher academies and a grow-your-own approach. So how do we develop pipelines for teacher talent right in the district to be able to grow our own? Planning phase last year with full implementation this year, I'm excited to share some of those developments. Within joyful learning environments, we focused on researching and implementing a district-wide framework to address social and emotional learning, also shorthanded as SEL. Last year, we were in planning phases, and I'm excited to share that we're actually a year ahead of schedule, and we have begun the work of implementation of those efforts, as you'll recall from our recent report on climate and wellness from Ms. Amanda Thomas. And then finally, with accountability excellence, we committed to launching performance-based management systems for teachers, principals, and central office leaders. We were in a planning phase for that last year, and again, we're ahead of schedule this year with implementation of an evaluation system for our central office leaders. As you may be aware, the performance-based management system for teachers and principals, the Performance Growth System, is one that is universally adopted at Mississippi Public Schools and has been developed in partnership with the Mississippi Department of Education. But there is no such instrument for central office leadership. And so Dr. Green has given us the charge that feedback is for everyone, that we can all grow in our roles, and if accountability is good enough for teachers and our principals, it's certainly good enough for central office leaders. And so we're excited to share the progress made on that front. As was mentioned at last month's meeting, we're very excited to have been awarded a grant from the William and Flora Hewlett Foundation. It is a grant for $1.5 million, which will support a number of the projects that I'll speak to tonight. It is an 18-month grant and will support strategic plan commitments in the following areas. A student voice project, which will involve global learning and travel, hopefully post-COVID, where that will open up. Additionally, expanded teacher residencies to support our critical teacher shortage areas. And then as well, the development of a JPS virtual school to support continuous learning post-COVID. One of the realities that we've been able to live into is that while virtual learning doesn't work for all of our scholars, it isn't the preferred model for all of our scholars, it is working for many of them. And teachers have developed a skill set to support virtual learners, and we want to be able to live into that in our learnings and our salient understandings that will travel with us post-COVID. So as we enter that new reality, we might be able to launch into a virtual school that will give us an opportunity to attain several of our core objectives. So with regard to commitment one, a strong start, one of the key initiatives was the development of a parent academy. The Barxville Reading Institute was a district partner and continues to be a district partner. They have developed a parent academy, which the board supported the adoption prior to this year at North Jackson as a pilot, and then also at Johnson Elementary. Well, this year, due to COVID, we thought it would be a great opportunity to expand the reach of the parent academies to all parents of incoming kindergarten students. And so the parent academy is five monthly parent family engagement seminars, which are focused on kindergarten readiness skills, which include general development, oral language, alphabet and writing, early numeracy, and then a session that ties it all together with meaningful opportunities to practice this skill set. We think it's vital to have parents engaged early, and we know that when we equip parents with this information about how to engage scholars early and give them concrete resources to help them make them, to make it happen, that great things happen for our young people, and they enter more prepared and ready to tackle the kindergarten year. Additionally, we've moved to the virtual model, and so we've been able to support hundreds of parents over these virtual evenings. It's really exciting. We've also engaged our high school scholars in the distribution with socially-distanced materials that we've done so that parents can follow along with the handbooks and also have access to manipulatives to implement the skill sets. So this was one of the focuses, and it is, we have checked the box with regard to parent academy, but we want to continue to deepen our implementation. We're very excited for the leadership of our elementary Assistant Superintendents, and specifically Ms. Franklin, who has led this effort to deepen that, and the whole team. Van Winkle Elementary in particular, that has helped with the launching of videos and other school teams, Johnson, North Jackson, that have been involved in the facilitation. And we're also able to make that available in Spanish, which is such a critical skill set. And I would hate to leave out any of our elementary schools, but McWilly has also been a tremendous partner in this effort to expand this opportunity for our parents in parent education and engagement. So that's a strong start. With regard to commitment two, innovative teaching and learning, we were focused on a number of key initiatives, but one I'll single out tonight, which is focusing on engaging out-of-school time experiences. Dr. Green is particularly committed to global citizenship. You'll see that in our profile of a JPS graduate. So we have the opportunity with the Hewlett Grant to deepen partnerships with IDEA, the Institute for Democratic Education in America, which is based right here in Jackson, as well as the Fahrenheit Creative Group, which is a marketing and communications firm, which will, has done a number of projects, including the design of our student logo, our district logo with a group of high school scholars. This particular project will engage with these partner organizations to develop a student voice project. As well, it will center on our secondary scholars and global citizenship with the opportunity for them to develop responses to local issues, which ties to our core value of relevance, as well as to form partnerships across borders with international peers. So we're really excited about this new opportunity for our high school scholars to really live into the profile of a JPS graduate and to develop their global citizenship skills. For commitment three, one of the projects that we're focused on is the development of teacher residencies, which support our critical shortage areas. One of the things that we love to do in our Office of Human Resources is to review the data. So we're reviewing the data on teacher vacancies, and we're reviewing the data with regard to those teacher roles that are hardest to fill. And based on that data, we know that we continue to contend with challenges around certified math educators, special education, and elementary education. So we are utilizing that data to actually develop a residency model. And previously, we have a grant with the Kellogg Foundation, which is supported by the Mississippi Department of Education, which identifies assistant teachers in our district with that two-year degree and engages them in a two-plus-two program. So while they get the support to complete their bachelor's degree, they also get a holistic set of supports to basically support them through those additional two years of education, but then also their classroom and field experiences. And that will lead additional educators to certification in our district. So we're very excited about that, that opportunity to grow our own and to deepen our bench. We're looking at how can we leverage that short-term Kellogg residency, which is helped and facilitated by the National Center for Teacher Residencies, to take and duplicate that approach in these three critical areas of mathematics, special education, and elementary education. And so we're very excited to have the board support. Last board meeting, you helped to, and you reviewed the information with Dr. Salgado on teacher, teacher classroom experiences at Jackson State and Delta State University. And so we're looking to expand those partnerships. As well, you have supported our work with William Carey University and their online learning platform, which will help to convert those educators working on a one-year license into fully licensed teachers at the end of the year. So we're really excited to leverage this opportunity to deepen our partnerships, as well as address these critical shortage areas to ensure the strategic plan goal of a certified educator in every classroom is done through review of the data and growing our own. Then we've launched our social emotional learning framework, and as I said, we are a year ahead of the game. Ms. Amanda Thomas shared with you the CASL framework, which is a nationally and a research-based framework for supporting social and emotional learning. Our climate and wellness team has assisted us valiantly in developing daily lessons to support social and emotional skills in the classroom. So if you happened upon virtual learning lessons or you're a JPS parent, you've likely seen that we start each day with social and emotional learning. And one of the reasons that we're ahead of schedule is because it was so important to provide for social emotional learning during this pandemic and during our time out of school. As well, the climate and wellness team engages in climate walks and virtual visits to ensure the implementation of these practices. The CASL framework involves the following social emotional learning skills: self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. And so as you can see, it's a robust framework, which recognizes that education is inherently a social enterprise, and that in order to really do the work and do it well, we have to learn to be in community with one another. And then finally, we're really excited to share the progress that we've made toward the launching of a central office leader evaluation system. Again, feedback is for everyone, and we all have the opportunity to live into our core value of growth mindset and getting better at the work so that we're better for our teams and better for our scholars. So we're excited to have launched the Core Squared Framework, our central office rubric for evaluating excellence. We launched it this summer and are providing monthly training for our central office leaders. And the evaluation system actually involves three components. The first component is a core values narrative, in which the core central office leader and their manager or supervisor provides a narrative about one of the core values which they identify as a strength, and then identifies an area for growth. As well, a second component is the development of two performance goals, which will be SMART. They are SMART because they are specific, measurable, attainable, realistic, and time-bound. And so each of those goals is reviewed not only by the supervisor, but then by the appropriate chief, so that they can... So that they can provide real guidance and support to attaining those goals over the course of the year. And then a third component is the rubric itself, which evaluates instructional effectiveness for our instructionally facing leaders. Operational effectiveness for our operations leaders and accountability and excellence as a through line for all leaders in the central office. And so we believe that this evaluation system is an upgrade over our previous evaluation systems. That, that it will look and drive improvement across our organization. And we're excited to share that. Again, we're ahead of the game. We thought it important to pilot to work out the kinks. But we are committed to excellence and committed to constant improvement as modeled with our core value of growth mindset. So key takeaways about our five key initiatives and strategic plan commitments. We're working purposely to fulfill the commitments that are made in the plan. And though we faced once in a generation pandemic, we've made steady progress before, during and even after our COVID-19 closure. And restart of school as a, as virtual learners. Additionally, we've had sizable external grants made by the Kellogg Foundation, the Hewlett Foundation and others. Which make it possible to accelerate our progress toward the five commitments. And allow us to deepen our partnership with organizations like IDEA and the Fahrenheit Creative Group and our local university partners. They will provide us with critical expertise and additional staffing capacity. And then finally, we're on track with a variety of our plans, academic, behavioral and attendance benchmarks, if you, as you have seen. And we believe that our SMART restart plan will allow us to even bring greater attention to the attendance facing goals as we look. To recapture our scholars that may not have been well-served. Over the course of our virtual learning model to provide those options. But we have made significant progress, as you saw with behavior and are looking for ways that we can. Take these salient learnings from the first semester and incorporate them for moving forward. And with that, board members, I'm happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
Okay, hearing none. I want to thank you, Dr. Cormac, for that presentation. You know, board members, we, we had some discussion as to whether we would continue with this presentation at this point. There's so much that we are focusing on the issues of the day and managing through those. But you know, it was important for us to keep in front of ourselves, in front of the team, the community, of course, in front of you. Not only our efforts to manage the issues of the day, but also leading strategically for tomorrow. And that's been a conversation and work that we're focused on throughout the district. You know, we're, we're really working hard and diligently to address the things that are right in front of us, COVID. The SMART restart, some of the, the staffing or technology issues or what have you, all of those things. But we know that if we're to be changed, if we're to evolve this district, if we're to. Transform this district in ways that we've committed to doing, that we've got to continue our strategic leadership. And so therefore, I'm pleased that we can share these successes with you, that we actually have some successes to share with you. And that we have this venue to, to share those. And so please do continue to ask us questions and, and poke holes. And, 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 and help us to interrogate the work that we're doing. We don't claim to have all of the answers, but we were, we were serious when we said that this strategic plan would not just be mine. And it would not simply be something that we put on the shelf and, and continue on to do business as usual. But that we'd use it to guide us and to challenge us to do things differently and better. And increasingly better day after day, time after time. And so again, thank you, Dr. Cormac, and to all of the, the champions of the strategic commitments. We know that that's tons of work on top of the work that they've got to do every day. But it's just important for us to, to move that work along. And so thank you for, for all of that. And of course, to all of the partners who've joined and locked arms with us to, to make this work happen. Dr. Sevak, board members, at this time, this concludes our announcements and, and remarks. If you have any questions for me, I'll certainly take those, but if not, I'll turn the meeting back over to you, Dr. Sevak.
Thank you, Dr. Green. Can you hear me?
In my head, hold on one second.
Thank you, Dr. Green. As many board members noted in the comments. Congratulations to the team for continued good work. And again, we're, we're just really excited to see the progress that's being made, even during these, these difficult times. So again, thank you. And Dr. Cormac, we appreciate that, that thorough report as well. At this point, we would move on to public participation for general com, for public comments. I've been informed that there are no participants for public comment. I would just like to remind community members who would like to make public comments should email their requests to Ms. Rosalyn Williams. At RozWilliams@Jackson.K12.MS.us. No later than 5:15 on the day of the board meeting. Or log into the Zoom meeting between 5:00 and 5:15 PM to indicate their desire to comment. Before we get started. We actually are not going to get started. Those are notes for when we have comments. So at this point, we are going to move on to information and action items. The item for tonight will, the first item, information action item, A, approval of data sharing agreement between Safer Management and Jackson Public Schools. I believe Dr. Cormac will present this information to the board.
Good evening, once again, board members, Dr. Green. I come on behalf of the administration, we are recommending the approval of a data sharing agreement between Safer Management. And Jackson Public Schools. As you saw in the superintendent's report video. We're very excited to add this additional tool to our toolkit. To provide for a mobile application that will support the safe re-entry of scholars and staff members into our buildings in January. The Safer Management app assists with contact tracing as well as a number of applications that will be vital post-COVID. From attendance and other mechanisms. As you saw, the, this particular agreement focuses on the data sharing. Because this particular project pending board approval would be funded externally. Through a Kellogg Foundation grant to support a COVID re-entry and our planning efforts with that in mind. So we're very excited about this project and opportunity to support a JPS graduate and alum. Mr. Burns and development of an excellent product that we think will help to address a critical need. Of contact tracing, temperature checks and other useful data. So I'm happy to entertain any questions the board may have.
Dr. Cormac, I don't have any questions, but I just say kudos to this project, everything about it. I liked and when I saw that it was a JPS graduate as well, I almost jumped out of my seat. It really speaks to all of the things that this board hoped for. That this district would be able to deliver and support our community. In what, 2017, y'all helped me remember. But health and wellbeing and clean water and clean schools, working with parents. Coordinating across the city. It's just such great work. So that's, you probably, y'all probably talked about a lot last meeting and I wasn't able to attend, but I just want to say kudos.
Thank you so, so much. And I'd be remiss without mentioning that Mr. Burns does join us on the board meeting this evening. And so if there are particular questions. He is also happy and can assist in addressing those, but we're quite proud of, of what he's done and how this invention was really born. Out of his experience as a father and trying to help his. His frustrations with the inefficiencies of checking his boys into summer camp. And from that, an idea was born that has really become a great company. Assisting at Jackson State and St. Richards. And so we're, we're quite proud to bring this before the board.
I'd move that we approve this.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. I do have one question before we vote. So again, would just echo all of the comments that the board had, had made, Dr. Hairston had made. I think it's also another great example of how we keep wealth in our community here in Jackson as well. The question I have is, again, seeing the presentation earlier. Where there was essentially artificial intelligence taking an image of, of a student's face, facial recognition. There are obvious data sensitivity. Requirements around the collection of this information and all the information that I received in the board prep materials. Make me confident that we're able to do that. But for, for anyone watching, for the public, if you could just speak to the safeguards that will be put in place for our students. Who will be engaging with this technology, I would appreciate that before we vote.
Absolutely. So it, it's, it's well stated and we were very careful as we drafted the data sharing agreement. That those protections to student privacy and health information were protected. And so it was drafted by our, our general counsel and reviewed by the board attorney as well to make certain that those safeguards to, to student. Safety and privacy would be there. Parents will opt in as well and will connect it with our JPS app. So we believe that that's really important. But let me give you a, a particular example that is safeguarded. So one of the things that it will allow us to do is to send a, a notification to parents at the start of the day. Or to high school scholars on a mobile device where they do a health survey or questionnaire. Where they might identify a list of COVID symptoms and if they've experienced those. Well, if a student should be flagged as or recommended and advised not to go to school, but they do. We wanted to make certain that the warning system that would happen would be done in a discreet fashion rather than. If you go to certain institutions around town, it may signal red that a person has a temperature. And we didn't want any stigma or any issues with poverty or data sensitivity to be triggered as a result. And so what that will allow is restricted access by an administrator that will be part of the check-in process to make certain that that is a. A discreet note to them. And then they can confidentially advise the student and make a phone call to the parent for pickup. So it's those kinds of things that we've engaged in, not only in the data agreement, but also in really thinking about the logistical operations. And the presentation at Mur with high school principals was yet another opportunity to work through each of those privacy concerns.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Cormac. So hearing that, I know it was moved by Dr. Hairston. And pardon me, board, I, I didn't catch the second.
It was me.
Okay. Okay. So Dr. Hairston has moved, Dr. Luckett has seconded. All in favor, say aye. Opposed. Hearing none, the motion is approved. We are now on to the approval for the disposal of records in accordance with Board Policy CIB. And our council attorney Robinson will present this information.
Good evening, Dr. Sevak, board members and members of the JPS community. In accordance with Board Policy CIB titled document retention. The Office of the General Counsel requests approval from the JPS Board of Trustees. To dispose of legal files and workers' compensation records. In accordance with the retention schedule articulated by the Mississippi Department of Archives and Education. As well as our Board Policy CIB related to litigation files specifically. The creation of an adherence to a record destruction schedule is consistent with Mississippi law and board policy. And our office seeks to dispose of legal files and workers' compensation records. To better organize the office and provide greater efficiency in both of those areas. I'm happy to entertain any questions from the board related to this recommendation.
Board members, we've had the opportunity to hear the presentation from Ms. Robinson and review this information in advance. If they, are there any questions? Hearing none, we'll entertain the motion.
I so move. Second.
Ms. Hilliard has moved and Dr. Hairston has seconded. All in favor, say aye. Any nays? The motion is carried. Thank you, Attorney Robinson. Next, we have the approval of the monthly financial report for the month ended November 30th, 2020. Our Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Sherrilyn Miller, will present this information.
Thank you, Dr. Sevak, Dr. Green, members of the board. I am pleased to present you the monthly financial report for the month ended November 30th, 2020. The monthly financial report includes your statement of fund balance, your budget status report. The status of your bank reconciliation and also district maintenance cash flow reports. Just as a matter of comparison, board members, just a few highlights I'd like to bring to your attention. Looking at fund balances, that's one of the indicators of where we are at the end of every month. At the end of November of last year, our fund balance and district maintenance was about $27.9 million. We are, which was about 14.75% of the total receipts at the time in November of 2019. At 2020, just for a comparison, at this point, our, our fund balance in district maintenance was $25,027,867. Which is about 13.54% of total receipts, which is still very consistent with where we have been in the past. It works really well with knowing where we are in November, being the fact that this is not where we get are the majority of our revenue. So we're continuing in a positive manner and I'm very pleased to see the, the stable fund balance. As far as a budget status report is concerned, for district maintenance last year, we were about, we were at, at the end of November 2019. About 34.69% of our budget expended, about $65.8 million. Our budget last year was 189 million. Conversely, our budget this year is 184.8 million dollars and we have expended about 32.8%. Which is still a really good place for us to be, again, considering November, where we are, I'm very pleased about where we are at this point. As far as. Budget revenue is concerned, we've collected about 35% of our budget again, which is a good point for us to be in. Considering that our large times of collecting of revenue is coming up in January, February and March. As a result relates to cash flow, I do want to point out to you that we're, cash flow at the end of November. For district maintenance was about $11.5 million, whereas at the end of this month, it's about $12 million. So we're still in a really good positive cash flow position. I looked at the average expenditures that last year compared to this year, also through the month of November. Last year, our total expenses in district maintenance, which include payroll, accounts payable, transfers out to other funds that we support in district maintenance. We were spending on average about $13 million. This year, we're actually spending about $11 million, $11.8 million, which is right in line with our significant budget reduction. So we would want to see that, that trend continue. Even though we have a lower budget, you still want to make, we still want to make sure that our total expenditures are about, are trending in the same direction. One of the things that I noticed is that last year, we did have to, we, we did some transfers out to other funds. And we normally do that as a matter of budget for timing, whether or not the funds are actually spending in that line or not. We just transfer the money out anyway. This year, what we've done is we've taken a lot closer look at expenses. And made sure that we are only transferring to those funds that need the support at the time. And that helps us keep a positive cash flow in district maintenance. So I'm very pleased as to where we are right now in November. I think the, the spring will tell where we are as far as tax revenue and tax collections are concerned. But as far as expenditures are concerned, we're right in line and I'm very, very happy with what the direction we see. and I'm very, very happy with what the direction we seem to be going in. So board members, if there are no questions, this is your financial report for the month ended November 30th, 2020.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Thank you, Ms. Miller. At this time, board, are there any questions? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve the monthly financial report for November 30th, 2020.
Removed.
Second.
Dr. Luckett has moved, Ms. Hilliard has seconded. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Next, we will move on to our consent agenda item for finance. All of the consent agenda items have been reviewed by the board previously, and we've had the opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any further questions from the board?
Dr. Seaback.
Yes, Dr. Hairston.
Are we consent agenda items, finance, number eight?
Yes, we are.
Okay, thank you. I did have a brief question. One of them that I often ask, Dr. Green, will board members, is it possible for board members to be able to access these digital curriculum supports?
Dr. Hairston. I think that's a great question. Why don't we pull item A from the consent agenda item so that we can have a conversation about it more deeply and?
Well, excuse me, Dr. Seaback, I'm not opposed to it. Whether we can or cannot, I still support the item. I was just curious. I personally don't think we need to pull it. I don't have that kind of concern. I was just.
Oh, no, no. I was just pulling it for discussion.
Okay.
Because I had some questions as well that I felt like it would be helpful to just have a discussion about it outside of the consent agenda.
Okay, great, thank you. So is that A or C? I'm sorry. That's A, C, or A C, that's what I thought.
Dr. Seaback, I move that we pull item C from Consent Agenda Items Finance for further discussion and approve items A, B, D, and E.
Second.
Okay, so Dr. Luckett has moved that we pull item C for additional discussion and that we approve items A, B, D, and E. And that motion has been seconded by Dr. Hairston. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Now we have item 8C before us. Dr. Green, would you like to provide additional background on this contract? Thank you.
Sure. And thank you for the question, Doctors Hairston and Dr. Seaback. So just as a reminder for board and, I guess, clarification for those who are listening in, we come to the board for approval of curricular materials. When we are in an adoption year or we're moving towards a new curricular model or a set of materials, we come to the board with a strong recommendation that's based on research and data and references from other districts or other states who might be using those curricular materials as well on the heels of and the strength of a local team from our district that has looked at some number of curricular materials to select the ones that we're bringing to the board for action. And so that was done last summer, so a year and a half, about a year and a half or so, last spring, actually, or spring before last, the spring of 2019. So about a year and a half or so ago. And we selected new curricular materials. So what the board, board members and for others who are joining us this evening, what we're bringing to you now is our supplemental tools or materials to support the curricular materials that we've already purchased and we're already using. And so as an example, we utilize, we adopted wit and wisdom as the core curricular, set of curricular materials for English Language Arts in elementary. And so we're bringing to you now, because of our increased use of technology and our efforts to utilize more of the materials remotely and all that sort of thing, we're bringing to you a request to purchase the digital tools that align with wit and wisdom. And I believe we'll be coming to you with more of them to align with other materials that we've already gotten support for previously. And so specifically to your, and I'm sorry, I should also say, typically when we, when we go out for bid for materials, we bring the bid winner or recommendation from the bid to the board under the finance agenda items as opposed to some other information action or some other process, just to clarify why it's being brought to you in the way that it's being brought tonight. And so now to Dr. Hairston's specific question, I have to ask or check in with our team in terms of the numbers of licenses that we are purchasing or how much access we have to the materials. But I would imagine that we have some administrative rights and access that we could share with board members. We would absolutely love for you to have a clearer view to these materials as we're utilizing them so that as we get feedback and certainly as we anticipate, as we experience increased scholar achievement, that we'll be able to talk about those programs and some of the functionalities and capacities there and to have you have had some, having had some experiences with it. So let me double back with the team to determine exactly how we can give you access or some level of access or exposure to the materials. And we'll, we can definitely come back around with, specifically with regard to that.
Thank you so much for that information, Dr. Green. And just to be clear on the record, I totally support the curriculum. I'm just strictly an educator and wanted to learn more about it and how it works and.
I know you, young lady.
Okay, okay, okay.
Know how you, I know how you work, and so.
Okay, good.
I appreciate the question, and I know that it's from your own just kind of interest in better understanding what we're using. And I know that you, especially and some of the other board members with education background are likely to get questions about some of our.
Exactly, exactly.
I'm actually looking forward to kind of getting my, kind of rolling my sleeves up and getting into the materials as well. And so perhaps we'll have some shared experiences with that.
Great, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. And I know, Dr. Seaback, you had a couple of questions. I'm going to address my speaker and then see what questions you got.
No, thank you, Dr. Green. And again, part of the reason I wanted to pull it for further discussion is I didn't actually have clarity on the bid process being the trigger for it to be included in the consent agenda item for finance and given past discussions that this board has had around curriculum. When I saw curriculum bid, I wanted to just make sure that we elevated it just because it's so important to what we do.
That was good, Dr. Seaback.
Yes, yes, sir, and yes, ma'am. So yes, so that, that, you know, we explained that piece. Want to also say and just clarify for those who are watching and listening in that the, these digital products are likened to the consumables that we purchase each year to support the curricular materials that we adopt. So we adopt wit and wisdom each year. Typically, there are workbooks and some other things that are consumed within the year by the scholars who are in those classrooms and the teachers working with the scholars. And so each year, we have to replenish those materials so that the next set of third graders or fourth graders or whomever will have fresh workbooks and that sort of thing. So these materials are likened to that as well. Just got a note from one of our team members. These also provide for some digital presentations of the content. So it's, I mean, I'm liking it, likening, if that's the word, to the consumables just in that it's attached to something that has already been approved, but it's far more than that. I should, I should be careful. It's not just a workbook. These are much greater expanded materials to support learning remotely. And we're excited. And in fact, as an example, we will be able to utilize these materials on our ITV channels, our cable access channels, to support young people as they're learning from home, in addition to the virtual instruction that we'll be able to lift up with the new devices that we have. So just lots of functionality and opportunities here that we're excited about.
And I don't want to belay the point because our boss did an excellent job. I was going to say too, is, in the future, we're like, we're likely to have this as a package. So when we bring curriculum, we'll have all those capabilities rolled up into one. So it will be the part of the presentation of the bid. This was just done separately. We had some additional sources of revenue for this, so that helps support this purchase as well. So that's why it's a little bit different than the way we normally do curriculum.
Great, well, thank you.
Dr. Green.
Ms.?
Dr. Green.
One second, Ms.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Could you elaborate a little on the required elements that were used in the evaluation of the material?
I'm actually going to invite, I believe she's on, invite Dr. Smith to share, or I believe Dr. Smith is probably the best person to share a bit on the bid process and the selection of the materials.
Great evening, board members, board member Hilliard. To address your question, we did an RFP process which.
In the statement. In the rubric.
Yes, ma'am.
It talks about the rubric and the fact that you have required elements there. So I was just interested in knowing what some of these required elements were.
Yes, ma'am. So as Dr. Green had already stated, these digital components, they do complement our existing curriculum materials. However, the State Department has also updated their list of high-quality materials and added, for example, like with wit and wisdom, the digital component for wit and wisdom is wit and wisdom insane. So enabling teachers to have those visual presentations that where they can share their screen during their Zoom or Element platform. So they have to have, they have to have those capabilities as well as being able to access students, their data. We, Dorian and our legal team carefully looked at those memorandums of understanding and contracts for student confidentiality as well. And so just being able to offer professional development to, for our teachers to implement the digital curriculum enhancements to our already existing curriculum. So on the PD component, being a list on, being a part of that list of a high-quality list that the State Department has already developed as well, and also to ensure that inquiry-based learning is occurring even in the virtual setting. So those were some of the elements from our rubric that our potential vendors had to meet in order to be awarded this particular RFP.
Okay, sounds great, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, you're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Hilliard. Board members, are there any more questions? Hearing none, can we get a motion to approve item 8C, the approval to award the RFP for digital curriculum for K-12?
I so move.
Second.
Ms. Thompson has moved, Ms. Hilliard has seconded. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? No oppositions, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Now we will move on to our consent agenda items general. All of the consent agenda items have been reviewed by the board previously, and we've had the opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any further questions? If not, board members, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda for general items?
Removed.
Second.
Dr. Luckett has moved, Ms. Hilliard has seconded. All in favor, say aye. Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Next, we have the consent agenda item for personnel. All of the consent agenda items have been reviewed by the board previously, and we've had the opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any questions? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda item for personnel?
I so move.
Ms. Hilliard has moved, Ms. Thompson has seconded. All in favor, say aye. Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. I believe there is no consideration to hold an executive session tonight. So being that there is no, no need to consider an executive session, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Dr. Seaback, I move that we adjourn the meeting and would just note instead of doing that in the previous consent agenda item that we approved the renaming of two schools is a really historic moment for JPS.
Oh, good, good point, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Luckett, for making that point.
My second.
All right. So going back to the motion to adjourn, it was made by, was that Ms. Hilliard? And then?
Yes.
And then Dr. Luckett, I'm sorry. Dr. Lockard seconded. All right, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, thank you, motion carries. Thank you, everybody, have a great evening.
Happy holidays, folks.
Happy holidays, have a good night.
Thank you.